How'd you hit in there, counselor?
Good afternoon.
Hi. Those are light goals right there.
What's that?
Those are light goals right there.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure you guys had a great time on spring break while I was here, so. Didn't go anywhere? Are your kids not at school?
We'll probably go. I would imagine they'll go. In a couple of weeks, something's gonna die down a little bit.
You know, talking about if you stay around, that you get to go to all the restaurants.
I mean, they were the ghost towns.
You could just get parking in the village and a problem.
It was unbelievable. Now, our spring break was.
All right, it is 7 o'clock. I will call this meeting in order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got the approval of the memorandum of the March 18th, 2019 regular meeting. A copy has been posted. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second from Counselor Plunkett. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The memorandum of the March 18th, 2019 regular town council meeting is approved by a vote of six in favor, zero opposed. Department on March reports. Reports are submitted by town management staff for council review and posted on the town website, zeinsville-in.gov. Any question from any counselors on any member of the staff? All right. Next up, we've got a presentation by Zeinsville Community Schools, Dr. Scott Robison.
Well, I'm noticing the speed with which you work, so let us mimic that. And especially because of that beautiful weather outside. Thank you so much for some of your time this evening. I'm Scott Robison, Superintendent of Schools in Zeinsville, and I'm lucky to have Mike Schaefer, our CFO, with us, and Becky Kaufman, who is our Chief Operating Officer. We'd like to gallop through just a few of the slides that represent sort of the meat of what we've been telling the community as we've met with hundreds of them in forum events on all of our campuses across the last few weeks. We do come before you looking backward with pride in what we've accomplished and looking forward with a plan that is based on deep research. You may know that we are handling growth. Growth is coming at us consistently, and we're maintaining a stable school tax rate, which is an important part of our story. We think that's important for the community in many ways. We're using expert studies of demographics and facilities and through the proven record of financial stewardship to do what we're doing in effort to get to our board within the next few weeks and hope that they will vote for the recommendations that we're making. Zeinsville remains the lowest-funded school district in the state of Indiana, but most recently, we've been elevated to AA credit rating status. And for those of you who know about finance, that is a material enhancement to our ability to manage what we have to manage going forward. There are only two AA-rated school districts in the state of Indiana out of hundreds of them. That'd be us and Carmel, ironically, the two lowest-funded school districts in the state. We've gone 15 years with no new construction debt, and during that time, we've welcomed 3,000 new students to the Zeinsville Community Schools. Right now, because this has become a referendum state, in fact, one in three of our teachers is completely funded with those operating referendum dollars. So it has become very, very important to our overall program and to our promises to taxpayers and to parents in our district to ensure that we keep class sizes low. Now, those promises are protect class sizes and property values. And in our longer presentations, and we'll give each of you a copy of it this evening, but it's also available on our main website right now. And we'll have a slide at the end, in the event that you have questions, where folks can look at that URL and get to our website if they wish. The plan, then, is to add a new elementary school by 2022, go through one round of redistricting rather than multiples. That is a key element for us. We think that discontinuity for young children is a bad thing, and so we want to do this in a way that will allow us to just redistrict one time. A high school addition of 32 classrooms and some more elbow room is needed there by 2023. The Zeinsville Community High School is presently at 2,100 students and growing based on our demographic plan, along with the 200 new students we will get each year for the next decade. So we also need to do and continue doing upkeep on seven other campuses. You know about property tax cap losses. We've lost 21 million in the last seven to eight years, and so maintaining those facilities that are already built is a challenge for us, but that is a key investment by taxpayers of the community. We want to make sure we do that well. The path to this would be a board vote later this spring to be on the November ballot for two ballot questions. One would be a removal, I'm sorry, a renewal, not a removal, a renewal of our operating referendum at the same rate. It's been at the same rate since 2012 when we passed our first one. It was renewed in 2015 at 24.44 cents, and we've never actually reached that rate and would continue to do our best to come in under it each year. It might be noteworthy to you that there are presently 46 operating referenda on the books in Indiana school districts. Most of our neighbors all around us have operating referenda. Their average rate is about 27 cents, so we're about 3 cents lower than that. And then pass a capital referendum. It would be the first one in our community, and for infrastructure need of this size, it is required by law that we go before voters to do this. So those two ballot questions would be on in November. Quickly, just want to share that this, that can't be read by you, at least in this format, is part of the multiple pages on our website from the recently renewed Indiana Business Resources Center demographic study. They've worked for us for 20 years. This year, they were off by three kids in their projection. Now, they've done that year in, year out, even during the recession, just amazing accuracy. So we really trust them when they say that we will get 200-plus new kids for the next 10 years. We anticipate that if the board accepts our recommendation, we would plan to put the new elementary school, using the already-designed footprint of current Union Elementary School, on the 875 campus just west of Cobblestone and Spring Knoll. Turning now to the high school for a moment because of our needs there. Some of you may recall that in 2008, there was a master planning ordinance installed here in Zeinsville Community Schools, and that allowed us to do the future planning for all of our campuses with that special use designation of a school use. At that time, we studied the campus, 68 acres at that time, and determined that we could get about 3,600 students on that campus. Again, we're at 2,100 now. Those two dark brown boxes indicate areas where, at that time, we were just spitballing where it would be if we were to put up those two 600 student additions at that point. Obviously, things have evolved, and we have a bit of a different plan because of needs as we've grown. You see the green area at the top, some minor work, because we don't know if we're going to pass muster with our board or with the voters, so we haven't spent a bunch of money on any of these plans. But as you can see, the 32 classrooms we need to add would be in part in this corridor to help with the east-west travel through the building. If you've been in there, there's one corridor, and you know that. We have 2,100 humans plus staff moving around, and it's sometimes difficult to do that already with 2,100 kids there. So we also don't have a single cafeteria or large space where the kids can have lunch without it impinging upon the academic program, so that's something that we would also add in a centrally-located area. We would repurpose, as we did in 2015, some spaces like the old cafeteria as classrooms. And then we would reorient the building, again, with appropriate permissions and so on. Has to be studied some more, but we know that we would get better safety controls with a single entrance in the back where most students park and restrict the, we now have multiple entrances that we're policing each day to ensure that we have safety upon entry. So it's something that is an overall enhancement. This board that you can't see, but you can see the pink area at the bottom, indicates it's a planning board, and this planning board, if we zoom in, tells us when we will be reaching full capacity. We're already making changes at the high school and in two or three of our elementary schools, taking up the computer labs, not having adequate circulation. When we get in the 90, 95th, you know, 98% area of capacity, it is just difficult to do school, and so that's why we're doing what we're doing. So to end my portion and get you onto the real talent, these key points from facilities, this is based on deep study, just like the demographics are, externally-validated things, and that we do need an elementary six by 2022 and our high school space as proposed by 2023. Again, folks, this is the Cliff Notes version, and, I'm sorry, it's Spark Notes today. Just showed my age. Again. And so the Spark Notes version is this brief version, and in fact, the large version will be given to you on paper, and people can get it on our website right now. So now, for some financial news, Mike Schaefer, our Chief Financial Officer.
Ah, thank you. We would like to talk about the cost and our plan to pay for this, because obviously, this is a very expensive undertaking. We start talking about building a elementary school, expanding the high school. So the important parts we wanted to mention here is that we can do these things and lower the tax rate, because we can take advantage of the timing of some of our older debt rolling off. Our projection is that our tax rate will actually go down by nearly 5 cents by 2023, which is our comparison year. However, with the lower school tax rate, we will see some increases in tax bills. Just to be clear about that, there are several different areas within the school district that have different tax rates applied to them now. Our tax rate is uniform across the entire school district. As you see here, the differences cause some interplay between the tax caps and the tax rates in the various areas. So as a result, we've calculated that about 2/3 of all the properties in the school district will see a decrease, but about 1/3 will see an increase when we look at the total number of assessed properties within our school district. There is a calculator that we have. It's not yet online, but will be if the board approves the referendum going forward. The calculator will show us what it looks like in terms of the individual person, the individual property owner, and will show the differences between the tax bill you might have for 2019 and what you would have in 2023. The example we're showing here, $353,500 in the town of Zeinsville, that's actually the median price for a home in the entire school district. If we go forward, 1, 374,200 is currently the median assessment for homes in the town of Zeinsville. So those are examples we have. Each individual person will be able to look at this calculator when we get it online and be able to determine the exact impact on them as they make their decision to vote in support or in opposition to the referendum. Obviously, we hope they'll vote in support.
Questions, folks? We tried to mimic how fast you folks are.
I think most of our questions revolve around sparks.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
We don't know what Spark Notes are.
Yeah.
We all know what Cliff Notes are.
Yeah, yeah.
Mike, on a new home, what's the minimum value to support a student? If a lot of these developers come in and say, "Well, our plan says for the 250 homes we're putting in, that's only going to put one child per home." What's kind of the minimum house value to support a student?
Well, we've done some work on that fairly recently, and because of changes in the law and the way our funds have been restructured for 2019 by the state, that number's gone up considerably. And so I don't know if I can give you a definite number, because it's going to be situational on the various attributes of a particular subdivision as proposed. How many homes? Average prices? Will there be some commercial component? Will it be in a TIF? All those things come into play. Generally speaking, I think we're up in the 550,000-plus range now. It's gone up considerably from the old days when we used to be able to say, rule of thumb, was 350,000. That number is obsolete at this time, although I know it was widely bandied about for several years. Again, when we send a report, and as we do a number of financial projections, to send a report over to our good friend Wayne over here to be shared with the Planning Commission, we do try to put that information there as whether or not we see a particular positive or negative impact from each proposed development.
Thank you.
And sort of the follow-up question. I mean, for me, it's helpful to see your guys' numbers, because sometimes we see the developers' numbers, and magically, every development coming through has fairly little children in it. So, I mean, talking about what you guys were able to project, I think, is it IU, maybe you partner with on that? I think being able to have that from a Planning Commission standpoint and ultimately for us as a sort of neutral body, just saying, "Listen, here's the impact," is very helpful. So I would encourage the continuation of that kind of sharing of information.
Well, I will say that's a change we made last fall. We actually commissioned IBRC to determine a coefficient number, if you will, for the number of children we would expect from each type of home. They gave us a relatively, let's call it, detailed chart, and we have been using those numbers and telling the developers that we will supply the Plan Commission with the coefficient number that is indicated by the research of IBRC. Developer can say the number is different, but they will have to say it's different from what IBRC says, and obviously, as Dr. Robison alluded to, the credibility of IBRC, the accuracy of their numbers is beyond reproach.
Scott, you mentioned that Zeinsville's the lowest-funded in the state. Is that before the referendum dollars are included in that calculation? And where do we sit with the referendum dollars? Do you know that?
That is, the tuition support amount alone.
From the state.
Is the lowest in the state. To get us up near the median level of funding requires a referendum so that we can accommodate the growth that we're seeing. Mike, do you want to share more about that?
Well, we'll say right now, we're seeing an amount coming in from the referendum that gets us roughly to equivalent, depending on which of the numbers we're looking at and for which year. We're within a couple hundred dollars either way, the state average with the referendum included, but then we're not really comparing apples to apples there, because you're comparing us with the referendum versus other schools that just get state funding for that amount and don't have to have a referendum.
And not to go down too far a rabbit hole, but why are Zeinsville, Carmel, probably the two most affluent communities, the lowest-funded? Why is the formula skewed in verse to take-home pay and/or median household value?
Well, that's exactly why we are the lowest-funded, is because the formula looks at the percentages of students in poverty in a district. And the more children you have in poverty, the more money you get per child. We are at the bottom. We have the lowest percentage of children in poverty. The state currently, for funding formula purposes, defines that as children who are on food stamps, on welfare, TANF, or in foster care. So we have the lowest percentage, therefore, we get the fewest dollars.
Got it. And last question, I'm sorry, I'm hogging this. You mentioned redistricting. Would that happen in 2022 tentatively? Is that kind of the plan?
With our plan right now, we want to redistrict just once.
Yes.
So that we have the fewest transitions possible for students. So when we would open the new elementary in the fall of '22, we would be backing up that redistricting plan, really in the 2021, 2022 school year, so that in the winter of 2022, we can make a recommendation after community input and thoughtful study with modeling to determine what the correct school boundaries would be.
Thank you. Any other questions? I was going to hog in the microphone there, Counselor.
The, I've got several questions, but first, just to stay on the redistricting, do you have indications as to how you would foresee, like what schools would be pulling into the new school currently?
So part of our recommendation in looking at the location of the 875 campus, it's one of our central parcels that we can utilize. Utilizing that, also with some of the infrastructure in place, would pull off fewer students from each of the attendance areas presently. We would have to engage in quite a bit of modeling practice with updated numbers from the IBRC, with updated information from those proposed developments to the town of Whitestown and the town of Zeinsville, to have the latest information as we engage in that process.
Would part of that redistricting also encompass the students that would then feed into the middle schools?
Yes, we believe that looking at the current feeder-school component will be part of that process. At present, we have two elementaries, the two largest feed into Zeinsville Middle, three feed into Zeinsville West, and Zeinsville Middle School does have approximately 200 students more than Zeinsville West, and that trend is expected to be the same for the next 10 years.
My second question is, the referendum that has been passed and referendized passed have had sunset clauses or requests or requirements that they would go back up for renewals, such as the one we're looking at now. Is the capital referendum and the renewal of this referendum sunsetted as well or time-stamped? Or is this evergreen?
The present language in the law is that a new referendum could be on the tax rate for eight years. Correct? For the operating referendum, yes, excuse me, for the operating referendum. So this recommendation would replace or renew the current rate that we're presently at. The capital referendum would be a one-time bond issue, similar to when we've built in the past. As Scott mentioned, we have not had any new construction debt since 2005, so we would be engaged in that process for a one-time ask with our financial team.
So it'd be in order to float the bond?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Do you know how much the capital referendum is going to be for at this point?
Our estimate, which we show in the longer presentation, is that we'll see a maximum impact on the tax rate of 19.69 cents that would occur in 2023. That's why I mentioned it as our comparison here. 2023 will also see roll-off of existing debt of about 25 cents. So our projection is that the tax rate will actually be down from what it is in 2019 by just under 5 cents.
Maybe a, thinking dollar amount, are we trying to raise 25 million, 10 million for the new building, the new school and the expansion of the high school?
We are trying to raise a lot of money, but quite bluntly. The cost of a new school is estimated to be somewhere in the 30 billion-plus range, so we're talking about a sizable bond issue. The timing of that is what makes this work for us, to be able to lower the tax rate at the same time we're raising large amounts of capital to build new building.
Thank you.
Then this expected referendum, or capital referendum, do you have foreseeable transportation investment needs, new school buses, new routes, that kind of thing?
Part of the capital referendum amount does include, as Scott mentioned, caring for the resources across the, not just the new building, but all of our facilities. That does include the transportation center. So with an additional 200 students per year, we would of course need to expand our bus fleet, and so we would be looking at some necessary asphalt additions to the transportation center for both the buses as well as employee parking. So that would be specific to the capital referendum dollars.
And if I may add, the actual purchase of additional school buses will come from the school corporation's operations funds.
Okay.
Is there a way in the calculator, as you're presenting the projected tax rate to voters? There's a lot to take in to show, without the referendum, the impact on the quality of the schools that therefore translates into their home value. In other words, overcrowded schools that are lowered in rate are going to cost you 15% in home value, so you're trying to save $100 in tax, but you're going to give up $50,000 in home value.
Well, thank you for that question, because it is a piece of evidence that there is a strong correlation between fine local public schools and home values, as well as community safety. We know those things are true. There are so many studies out there. The definitive answer to your question is, no, the calculator itself does not do that. I would suspicion that a quick Google search could tell people what various academics would say is the extent of that correlation in an actual suburban home value.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you for coming out. We appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Next up is another fun one. We've got swearing in of new police officers, Chief Knox and Deputy Mayor Metro.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, other town counselors. Right, this is fun. I love doing this, getting to introduce a couple of our new police officers, so I would like to ask James Stiles and Cameron Smith to come forward. The way I'd like to do this, I would also invite Jill and Marissa to come forward and bring your cameras, and you guys can take, come on up, guys. Deputy Mayor Metro's going to swear you in, and ladies and family, you can take pictures and stand wherever you want, get your pictures. And after we do the oath of office, then if you'd set your cameras down, come up and pin the badges onto your gentleman, please. Deputy Mayor Metro.
Thank you. Good change for Mayor Hock, who is right now lying back in Florida, ending his spring break with his family. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, the oath of office for police officer for the town of Zeinsville, Indiana. I state your name.
Cameron Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution and statutes of the state of Indiana.
The Constitution and statutes of the state of Indiana.
And the ordinances of the town of Zeinsville.
And the ordinances of the town of Zeinsville.
I further swear that I will faithfully.
I further swear that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge the duties.
And impartially discharge the duties.
Of police officer for the town of Zeinsville, Indiana.
Of police officer for the town of Zeinsville, Indiana.
According to the best of my skills and abilities.
According to the best of my skills and abilities.
So help me God.
So help you God.
Congratulations.
I told him that this was the opportunity to really jab that into everybody. Thank you very much. We can go out to the lobby now and take some pictures out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations, officers.
Thank you.
Amy, any requests to speak?
No, there were no requests to speak.
I know.
We have no old business. First of all, new business is consideration of an ordinance regulating the firing or discharge of weapons. This is a first reading. This is ordinance number 2019-08. Vice President Taylor.
Yes, so just give a summary of how this came about. We actually had a concern brought to the Safety Board by a citizen on Bluer Lane in regard to some hunting that was being done on or near their property. The individual, obviously, was very concerned about this, and after some research, we found that the ordinance that we had on the books for the firing of a weapon was no longer on the books due to a renewed state statute. So the state statute nullified what we had. So this is bringing back a, an ordinance on firing a weapon within the urban district of Zeinsville. Just a brief summary on what that entails. It does list that it would be a weapon that requires an explosion essentially to fire the projectile, so a gun, but you know, for instance, a BB gun does not require an explosion to fire a projectile, so that would not be a prohibited item. Also, archery would not be prohibited, and there are provisions for hunting in this ordinance that we, you know, we essentially are at the mercy of the state for hunting as far as their laws go. So with that, Heather, if there's anything.
Yeah, I'd be happy just to give a little bit more background. So several years back now, the Indiana General Assembly did pass legislation that basically nullified any ordinance that was on the book relating to regulation of a firearm. And at the time, which predates me being here with all of you, there was communication that came out from then the Indiana Cities and Towns, basically directing cities and towns to repeal their ordinances. So that happened, and then I think as time has gone on, communities have looked to try to find a balance between that statute, which really sort of tied the hand of municipalities, and then trying to figure out how to ensure public safety within, you know, the municipal limits. So we've tried to strike a balance between multiple statutes that are at work, and I think we are doing it somewhat successfully. One is the statute that I mentioned in Indiana Code 364711.1, which basically says you can't regulate firearms ammunition storage. So we're going to have those legitimate businesses, like a shooting range, for example, that couldn't be prohibited. couldn't be prohibited with that statute on the books. Then we've also got Indiana Stand Your Ground law, which allows someone to defend themselves, basically to shoot a firearm if they're, you know, defending their own self or personal property. So we've got a provision that says that this would not be included. We've also got Indiana's constitutional right to hunt and fish, which basically says if you are a licensed hunter and you're applying with all the applicable hunting laws, including hunting seasons, licensure for hunting, and you have permission to be on the land in which you're hunting, that you have a constitutional right to do that activity. So we've got that sort of carved out as well. And so we're looking at sort of a number of things, but we also have the right in statute to be able to regulate conduct in the use of possession of property that might endanger the public health, safety, and welfare. So I think we're trying to strike a balance between all of these things. The other thing that this ordinance doesn't speak to, which would still be on the books, there's also statutes that talk about public nuisance. So there's public nuisance statutes, so if you were doing something that would endanger someone else, there's reckless endangerment statutes. So we've brought up the examples for, you know, if you're in your backyard and there's kids playing next door and you just, you know, discharge your firearm, even if you have the lawful right to carry it, someone could bring an action against you under reckless endangerment. There's trespass statute. So we've got, we're not eliminating any of those other laws that are on the books, but we're trying to strengthen what we don't have in the town currently, which is language to say, we want to regulate this activity and we want people to do it in a safe and responsible way. And so I don't know that we can create something that's going to get rid of every example that you all could come forward with, with all the different patchwork of statutes that we are dealing with in Indiana. Indiana is a very pro-gun rights, you know, state with a lot of statutory language that allows for those activities, but that's what we were trying to balance. We know that's what the Safety Board looked at, and then the Safety Board is actually making this recommendation to all of you after they've had a lot of discussion about it within that body as well, so.
What about, I've seen some homes that have private in-home gun ranges.
Yeah, I don't know that we can regulate something that's inside the home.
So you're saying that this law doesn't regulate that?
It does not. It does not.
Are you talking about inside a physical structure or outside, like with a berm?
Inside, no, inside a physical structure, inside the four walls, if you will, and basement, behind brick walls or stone walls, whatever. The other thing is that Councilor Trailer mentioned that there was some complaint about an issue, was that there wasn't actually firearms fired within the city limits, right?
No, this, it was kind of one of those things where the complaint led to-
I'm familiar with it, but I want to make sure people understand.
Yeah, no, there was no-
Thacking off rifles inside the city limit.
No.
They were doing everything within, within all the existing laws and in a very safe and civil manner.
It was, yeah, I mean, the gentleman had a, potentially a trespassing issue, but that, but there was no firearm.
Yeah.
Yeah, the challenge being that there was no way for that gentleman to avail himself of any kind of statute or reference within the law to say, this is a problem. And that's what I think came bothering a part of this.
And we tried to, to your point, we tried to pick up the statutory definition of what a firearm is or what it means to discharge a firearm. We really did just mimic Indiana Code with those sections in Section 1. So we tried to keep it very consistent with the various provisions of Indiana statute, so we don't run afoul of any of these prohibitions in terms of regulation. And we did look as well at a number of other communities and what they had passed and some of the discussion of their minutes as well. So several of the provisions are sort of lifted from other communities in our area as well.
Any other questions or comments on this? I would take a motion on this, then.
Make a motion to approve on first reading.
Second.
First from Vice President Trailer, second-
From Counselor Plunkett. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion, introduce ordinance number 201908 on first reading passes with a vote of six in favor, one opposed.
So I'm sorry, I just have a question.
Sure.
As an ordinance, are we introducing a first reading or we're-
Introducing.
Introducing, I'm sorry, because the language I heard was approving.
Right.
Approve the first reading, it still has to go to a second reading.
Introducing.
It'll be on our next meeting. Ed, keep us honest here, or Heather, correct?
Because otherwise we've got that three-step non-
Yes, correct.
Yeah, no, that's a fair point.
I just wanted to make sure that was clarified in the minutes, that we're approving the introduction on first reading.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up, we've got a consideration of an ordinance to amend the traffic code of the town of Zionsville Code of Ordinances, loading zone on South First Street. This is also a first reading. This is ordinance number 2019-09. Vice President Trailer.
Yes, as not to confuse the issue, I'll tell you what we have before us. We had a petitioner, again, come before us, asking for essentially the removal of the loading zone in the morning north of, north of Oak Street on First Street. Reason being, they wanted to be able to park directly in front of their building. One of the tenants had a disability that they felt like they should be able to park directly in front of their building. What this did was, again, opened up, you know, the opportunity to look at this, and what we came to the decision on was that the current loading zone in that area should remain the same as the recommendation of the Safety Board. However, the loading zone south of Oak Street on First would go from, would extend the hours of the loading zone until 4:00 PM in order to be able to vacate the, vacate those for parking spaces for the dinner rush. But we found that there, the deliveries are not just being made prior to 10 o'clock in the morning. So we're, we asked that there also be additional enforcement as we are giving a little lenience to the, to the times that they can have deliveries on Main Street. And actually, the surprising thing, most surprising thing was that it had the support of several of the business owners on Main Street to extend the loading hours, which I was a little surprised by, because I thought they would have valued the spaces more, but they said they really needed that additional loading time.
Any questions on that?
No, I think I would just add the fact that this follows closely the recommendation from staff who did a very thorough review of all the parking issues in front of us. It was not just the petitioners, the Safety Board, but the staff did a very thorough review to assess the conditions of the parking, the flow, and the availability of spaces as well as loading and unloading. So there were some requests that were not accepted, some because they were accepted, but overall, the staff's recommendations are reflected in the Safety Board's recommendations.
I hate losing those spaces, but I understand the reason why, and I'm glad it's only till four.
Yeah, it's temporary.
Chief Knox, my ask of you and your department is, it's a pretty generous loading zone. You've got 10 hours a day for these folks to come in and load. If some guy is parking his semi on Oak Street at 4:30 PM, I'd like the ZPD to enforce that and get them out of there by the time rush hour is starting to come through, if we're now giving them. I agree, till 10 AM is pretty tight. Till 4:00 PM is pretty generous. If they're running that late, they've just got to go park somewhere where they can find it legally, and they've just got to haul their stuff in. So that would be my ask of ZPD.
Yes, sir.
This is about, I believe, the third time we've revisited this in the past six or seven years. And how, where did we begin? Do you know, I mean, just in terms of, was it a little-
We had nothing.
Okay, so, and then we limited it, because I'm hearing different versions of this, and then it went backwards, and then now it's going backwards.
This is South Street.
Yeah, you know the rules, Ed.
South of Oak Street currently is not working. To limit it till 10:00 AM, a lot of deliveries come in the afternoon, and all you have to do is drive there and see the, you know, various produce trucks double parking in the travel lane, because there are people parked on there. So, you know, it makes very good sense, and I agree with Counselor Trailer, enforcement is a very important second aspect of this.
Can I buy a delivery truck and just park there?
I believe we see you loading and unloading crates.
Fair enough.
North of Oak Street, when the disabled person moves and doesn't live there anymore, then somebody gonna come and-
We did not, so to clarify on that, we did not change anything on the north side of Oak Street. It will remain as is, the loading zone from 6:00 to 10:00 AM. We didn't extend it any because we didn't want to bring any further harm. But the individual that, the tenant at that establishment, this current parking ordinance was in place when they moved in. So that was where, that was where I came to the conclusion that, you know, it was, this is what you bought. You know, this is essentially what you came into.
Well, and I think also the challenge that they were posing as far as access to available parking for people that had physical challenges was literally within a few steps from where they are now. So there was, there's plenty of access at that point in time that kind of negated their immediate request.
Any other questions? Take a motion?
I move approval.
Got a first from Counselor-
Sorry, I move introduction to first reading.
Yeah, because you knew I was going to bust you on that.
I know. I saw you.
Yeah.
I'm like-
I wasn't going to let you have that one.
I know, I saw that. I'm like, back, back, I put my back up.
First from Counselor Suarez, second from Counselor Spies. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, introduce ordinance number 2019-09 on first reading passes with a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Any councilor have any other matters to discuss tonight? All right, I will make a motion to approve claims.
Second.
Second from Counselor Suarez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Claims were approved by a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I heard Counselor Hopper there first. Who was second? Counselor Suarez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion to adjourn is approved by a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. The next regular town council meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 15th, in one week, at 7:30 AM in the Zionsville Town Hall Council Chamber. Meeting adjourned.
So where are you going?
Well, I'm going to make revisions. I've got comments. I need to draw on the gulf art and then recirculate it. Probably wait till we make decisions.
I was going to, can I still send you some comments?
I thought you did.
Ed did. Did I? Did I send comments? Ed sent comments. I don't think I have, because I've got it on my to-do list tomorrow, except if I want to.
Then I'll wait.
Yeah. I don't think I have any major, because everything he put down was like, yep.
Are we sending any sales?
Yeah.
I'm not reading it all.
Yeah.
I'm not reading it all.
Yeah.
Well, we have really been addressing it. I feel like I really didn't like it, and I spread it very far. It's really interesting.
Hey, you know what? Once in a while, pardon?
It allowed their kids to shoot off their property when they were paying, because it wasn't appropriate for the new owners.
Thank you, how are you?
They bought the property, actually.
Good.
I heard that. It's a, 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 it's